Alright, everybody. It is seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you for coming out tonight to the first official listening session that we're holding regarding the potential of a four-day school week. This is the opportunity for the board to listen to thoughts, questions, concerns that you might have. I want to reiterate the fact that this is a one-way exchange of information. The board is simply here to listen. There's not gonna be a response or any kind of back and forth because they won't be able to focus on your concerns and really put their attention toward that. I've been asked to stress again that the board is trying to gather information. They're going extremely slowly in their decision-making process because this is a tough decision. And anytime you have a decision like this, you wanna take your time and you wanna do it right. So that's part of the reason why we're having this. And I also want to stress the fact coming from the board that decisions have not been made. No formal conclusions have been reached. So please, you know, please note that the board seriously wants to hear what you would like to share with them. Right? And also that anyone on the board who wants to add? Alright, so what we'll do is I will just go down the sheet in the order that people signed up. Some people said, "Well, what if I don't wanna talk?" Well, no one's gonna force it to talk. Okay? If you don't want to, just simply pass and we're just gonna go in order. We have a three-minute time limit per person. We are not the Oscars. We're not gonna yank you offstage as soon as three minutes go off. You get your time to finish your thought if you need that time. And if time allows, we'll come back to the list. And if anybody wants to speak a second time, you'll have that opportunity as time allows. Okay? Alright, so with that, the first person who appears on my list is Diane Vigor.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address your support. This is a huge experience and there's a lot of new parts to go through there that I think not only like students, but also people. They get financials.
Diane, people have asked if you'd use a microphone.
I can't believe the teacher.
I know, I know.
Okay, again, thank you. Is it on?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to begin with community. You don't have a busy job. This is a difficult decision to make. I was a teacher on the school faculty when we went to the block system. We figured out that wasn't gonna work. It required more teachers and more money. This appears to be a cut, but isn't really a cut. If we lose students over, highly lost, a fairly substantial amount of students. I believe I heard thirty, but I don't have that as an official count. But if we lost thirty students, that would be a huge impact to our budgets. Not having funding for those thirty students. The other thing we wanna consider as a community is the availability of childcare. Ms. Brenda doesn't have very many slots open. It's really difficult to find a good, quality daycare center that would even consider taking that many students on one day a week. How about our children with their lunches? We've got about half of our kids. Are they not on free reduced lunches? Okay, so that impacted a family tremendously. That they're gonna have to feed those children on that fifth day. They don't have school availability in hot places. What about the employees of the district? Are they gonna take the cut pay? It's my understanding, no. So they're gonna continue to pay. Teachers, the same salary, though. They're going to be working one less day a week. Now, increasing it twenty or thirty minutes a day, that's not gonna make a pay difference. I'm sorry, the kids reach that saturation. Thirty-five years in a classroom. You can see where the eyes kinda go, you know, they're just glancing off into nowhere and they aren't following along. So the saturation point of students for a long day is not a good thing. I think that our board, and I'm gonna really sit on some toes here. We've got some no bias members of our board because we have members that have police as rights of the district or as ones of the district. That's, you go when you sleep with the board member and it's like, "No, we're not gonna do this," or "Yes, we need to do this." Okay? So I don't mean to, you know, embarrass any of you, but that is a consideration that I think that we need to have. We gotta keep that, you know, look at the district goals as a whole. I think that's it for right now, except what are we gonna do when those kids start to struggle? With the block system, we saw that we couldn't afford it. And we saw scores drop tremendously. The kid would go almost completely without math. They'd have math in first year or the first semester, others junior year, and then they wouldn't have it again until the second semester. So they're assuming, and they had to take their CDs in between that. So we saw a huge drop in school. So what are you gonna do? What is, what's gonna be our major state? Here goes Mr. Peters. Okay.
Thank you for your time. I really do appreciate it. Alright, thank you Diane. Phil Small, you're next on the list.
Thank you for having me tonight. And I guess my comment is, and I know no decision has been made and I've heard of that, but I guess my line on making point to you as you were in fact as the board of education. And I hope that you keep that in mind as you progress as to how that's going to improve or increase the education of our students by cutting back the time that in the classroom, going along with teachers and whatever. I've been close enough to know that they've had some summer time classes available for kids that need extra help and other things. Also, that kinda shows people the need for more. And also, the time, another thing that hits me is when I was in school, and I know it's kind of a long time ago, that our days were longer, the classroom days were longer than they are today. And I wonder what happens to the, I'm troubled by teaching with students going on one to shorten the day, shorten the week. Where is the education? Where are we picking up from here? So I feel you're the board of education and that's what I want you to focus on.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Cherish, you're next on the list.
I'm Ms. Cherish Humick, and I teach in a five-day school district by choice, and I field test my students and my own children. Through my research, I have found that some schools saw significant decline in their math and reading test scores after switching to a four-day school week. These negative effects are roughly equivalent to a student being two to seven weeks behind where they would have been in a standardized five-day district. Also, the shortened week and widely achievement gap for our most adverse and vulnerable students. Mental health is a huge crisis in our schools, as the committee had mentioned. I discussed this with several school counselors and social workers. They said that if a student is having a mental health crisis, that they need eyes on them. Four days a week, the four-day week limits access to counseling and support to teach them how to cope and work through crisis. All Iowa teachers are required to be trained on suicide prevention and identification of adverse childhood experiences. The professional test office said that they would never let a student's crisis home alone and not having access to the school supports. Also, they mentioned that many of these students do not receive supports outside of the school, such as counseling and behavioral therapy. If the rigor is what is too much for students, then I would suggest an idea of I-04 for those specific needs. You don't make special accommodations for every single student in the school who's, when they're able to keep up with the rigor. Research shows that teachers chose things over four-day work weeks. Their salary, benefits, positive work environment, and supportive administration. Data shows that teachers stay in these districts, they do not leave solely for four days a week. I'm concerned that we're putting a Band-Aid over the real issues on teacher retention in Waplo. Considering enrollment numbers, Hilo implemented a four-day week, and I know that only K through five school, they lost thirty students. Curriculums are formed considering a five-day school week, so essentially you're trying to squeeze a five-day curriculum into a four-day week? Who decides what's dropped from the curriculum? Things are going to be lost, and that takes you back to that gap that I was speaking of before. And you have no recourse because curriculums, you're not teaching it with fidelity when you shorten the day and you're not teaching it the way it was intended. Educators will tell you that COVID had a devastating impact on students' learning. Not being in school during the pandemic adversely affected students' learning. Now, just a few years later, here we are, trying to limit our children's education when we're still trying to catch them up. We're seeing negative effects every day in other schools. Please don't take vital classroom instruction time when you're teaching children. The pandemic taught us that students need to be in the classroom getting explicitly taught instruction from certified teachers, not less classroom time. Considering these facts, have we thoroughly researched the most successful surrounding five-day districts? My fear is that we're experimenting with our children's education. Talk to the teachers who love their districts. Ask them why. Learn from and emulate these schools. Let's try to be the best. As an educator, I don't place my leisure time above my students' education, and as a parent, I don't place my child's leisure time above their education.
Thank you, Cherish. Alright, Adam.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I'm gonna talk about how we treat athletics versus academics. Athletics, the value of effort, right? My son is out for a cross-country practice, so five-day week can be a challenge. We have teams that were setting all, you know, up to, up to, up to, anyway. We, we, we value extra competition and extra parents. We try to maximize that. As parents, I can see when, when a coach is cutting the effort and pushing for whatever kind of results. It feels like this move would kind of do the opposite academically. Meaning, you know, our, our sports are already below our neighbors. We use these two points on in Media Alphas and LMN. All those schools have more contact time than we are proposing. It looks like, and I haven't seen the whole thing, that we're proposing we stay the minimum amount of time. I've seen some statistics for Media Alphas, thirty-four, forty-one, and so forth, and that. I guess the question is, why for athletics, where pressure gets harder and harder, hopefully give more results? But in academics, we seem to kind of do less, or thinking that we can do less hours and less days, and it's the same.
Thank you, Adam. Kristy Lopper.
Hello, thank you. I'm just, I got, I have nothing prepared, but I'm gonna just kind of piggyback off a few people. But I, as well, teach in a district that teaches five days a week. I've been with this district nineteen, nineteen years now. And we also teach CKLA with Waplo teachers. We teach I-ready with Waplo teachers. And like Cherish said, I have, I could not even, I struggle to squeeze that in in a five-day school day. I cannot imagine trying to squeeze in. Everything I need to get done with CKLA and I-ready, which are math and reading curriculum that Waplo has, in a four-day week, especially if I just have twenty extra minutes a day because by, we go from eight fifteen is our first, is our party about eight fifteen, until three twenty-five is our dismissal. And by two-thirty, my kids are done, checked out, whether it's Wednesday or Tuesday or Friday. And we get, have early outs, and Friday is our early outs. So no matter what the other week it is, it's a struggle to keep them focused anytime after two-thirty. And also, another concern I have was, the last forum I was at, I asked a question about students that are out of town and what about practices, anything like that, that extra curriculums that they have on that day. On the website, it said that, yeah, you're gonna continue, you plan on having activities still on those days, but there is not school. And that you were basically hoping to be able to get those kids that are not in, in town to those activities. But are you going to be able to guarantee that? We wanna have equity within our school with all of our students. So to kind of jump off what Adam said, if those junior high kids that are out of town, if we don't provide them transportation to get there, are they gonna have equity on the field because they missed the practice? Or are we gonna say, "No, we're not gonna have practice on Mondays because we're not having school on Mondays"? That's pretty much it. Thank you. So come on, that's me.
Okay.
I think most of everything in the day is a repeat. And I'm not a parent or a teacher or a retired teacher. I'm just a concerned grandma and community member. I'm against a four-day work week, mainly because I don't think that longer days work well for the elementary school kid. Maybe junior high, high school, but I, I feel like saturation was a good word. I feel like that they give them, there's so many hours in a day that you're gonna teach them, and then they're, they're, they're done. And you're not gonna teach anymore, but you keep them half hour, hour, two hours longer. They're not gonna learn no more. That's just my opinion. And I think you always lose a part of the day after a weekend. I would guess most teachers say that on a Monday morning, you're, it takes you a while getting back into the, into the rhythm. And I think especially a three-day weekend, it can probably be harder. I worry about the at-risk kids, those with learning disabilities and those with less than ideal home situations. I realize that's not the school's job to take care of that, but somehow we've kind of got stuck with that along the way. And I think being away from a stage learning environment for three days isn't ideal for those kids. I think this change in schedule would be hard to do as a trial. I think if we do it, it's gonna be hard to go back. Teachers aren't gonna wanna go back to working the four-day week to five days. Ultimately, I just think that any decision should be focused on what gives the most, the most students the best education. That should be the decision that you make, that should be the focal point. And I'm, I'm sure that it, that it probably is not trying to, I'm not trying to doubt that. I'm just telling you my opinion. Thank you.
First off, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight and having this meeting. But I wanna first talk about lost experiences for our kids. You're cutting out a whole day of this a week, and those experiences could maybe be from a hug from a teacher, a frame of play to play with their pieces, maybe a hot meal or a more place to be. Also, a safe place to be. Having a safe person to talk to out of the house. If you have a bad home life and your teacher is your safety net, you're cutting a whole day out of that week for a child that could be at risk to talk to their teacher if that's who they're comfortable with. I feel students with mental health issues, schools are named to be not at full level on that fifth day. The increased cost of daycare for our families. Can local daycare providers handle additional kids for one day a week? Or they've been hired staff for that additional one day a week? These are a lot of questions that need to be addressed before moving forward. I saw recently, United Way on February, September seventeenth this fall, they posted that in Loisa County, this is United Way of Southeast Iowa, they posted in Loisa County, there are currently 3.75 children per open spot of daycare right now. That's a huge issue that we would have to overcome. Like Cherish now, we are still trying to get these students caught up from COVID. We had a mission. We hired extra teachers to get these caught up, these kids caught up. Do we really wanna do this again? What are the goals gonna be if we do move to a four-day school? How are we going to measure this? I believe we need to have goals as a school district, and if we make it very clear that the goals are not met for the staff and the students, we go back to five days. Windfield, let's watch them for a couple more years. Let's learn from them. Let's learn from their mistakes. Why do we have to jump into it? Why do we wait for Windfield to see how they do it and learn from our peers? I'm sure this will cause some families to leave our district. Can we afford to lose any more students? We seem to be having to make budget cuts every single year. That's going to compound those issues. For example, my daughter is in first grade. She has twenty-five kids in her entire grade, not in her class. Can we really afford to lose any more kids? And I also ask you to highly consider this to go to a public vote because it's going to impact everyone in our community.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, you're next.
Alright. Side of numbers, so I'm gonna give you some information here. So our twenty-four, twenty-five calendar has one hundred and seventy-six students. The proposed holiday calendar has one hundred and forty-nine students. And I understand that that's just proposed. There's nothing final about it. But that gives us a difference of twenty-seven days. Over the course of their time at the elementary schools, so seven years from pre-k to fifth grade, that would equal one hundred and eighty-nine days less that they would be in the school over, over a year of school. Over the course of pre-k for twelfth grade, that's three hundred and seventy-eight less days over two years of school. Even if the hours are the same, a lot of the experiences will be lost, like Baath, Baath, Baath. Mostly in elementary, but also in high school. Your homecoming dress-up days, things like that, fun days, experience days that those kids have. That's a lot of days. And then for some kids, twenty-seven days more in a bad home environment. Or twenty-seven, twenty-seven days more left home by themselves. You know, with the lack of daycare, people are gonna be having their second years or third years staying home by themselves, and normally wouldn't be. And I've heard people have to figure out daycare or have to figure out something for their kids on their early-out day. You know, my first grader, if he had to, he could probably stay home by himself for an hour on a Wednesday, worst case scenario. But he can't stay home for an entire day by himself. We can get a high school kid or a, a younger kid to babysit for a couple hours where you can't have them babysit for an entire day. You know, your other elementary school kid's gonna stay by themselves for a couple hours, maybe not for a whole day. For kids who couldn't attend any daycare. So I've used a fifty-dollar a day program. So at that, twenty-seven days, it's thirteen hundred and fifty dollars more a year in daycare costs. Or ninety-five hundred dollars over the course of their time at their elementary school. That's big dollars for our families. During COVID, our kids missed out on valuable time in school, and I were looking to take that away. The school website says those surveys need to be developed for more design. Will there be any additional surveys given to Waplo families for the community? The previous surveys were done with little detail before any of the discussions were held. So another survey with more information could be valuable. If you decided to go with a four-day calendar, what would the criteria be to determine if it's working? Again, like Baath said, it is, a couple people said, is it possible to go back? I stay now in, in working, remote working. You know, a lot of people went remote during COVID, and now I'm trying to get people to come back in the office. It's a major struggle. People are quitting their jobs instead of going back to work because they're not getting used to that. So a big change. It's hard to go back.
You wanna finish your thought, Adam?
No, I'm gonna, thank you.
Okay. I told you, we're not gonna yank you off the stage. Alright, Beth Hart.
I kind of have all of the same concerns as everybody else. I just kind of wanted to give a little insight on a past experience. We did have a child who maybe was not on the straight and narrow path and was maybe a little bit more rebellious. And I just like to say it was nice to know when he was at school, like you didn't have to worry about him. You didn't have to worry, you know, was he getting any trouble? And the school notified you if, you know, he was late to school, if he didn't make it and he skipped out of class. So that's an extra day that, you know, we will have to worry about as parents for kids that, you know, just, you know, aren't straight A students or choose, or making wrong decisions. So I just wanted to give a past experience on that.
Thank you, Beth. Hart, Anne Wall. Beth, thank you.
Hello, I'm nervous, so I'm just gonna read mine. Probably a lot of repetition of what others have said, but, like I said, not Anne Wall. My husband's Johnny Ball, a Waplo graduate, and we have three kids from Waplo schools. One in junior high, two in elementary. Initially, upon hearing about discussion of four-day school week, my interest was piqued by thoughts of teacher retention. My kids have had really wonderful teachers here, and when I volunteered in their classes, I have observed challenges they face with a range of student backgrounds and teachers. As well as things like paperwork and state requirements overwhelm and hinder their actual teaching and instruction times. Our teachers deserve every bit of good pay and good benefits. Our teachers deserve every bit of good pay and good benefits. However, as I've considered a four-day week for my children and for all of our children, I've had a lot of questions and concerns. I'll start with questions. Are there statistics or is there evidence that four-day will provide growth in academics? Also, where can I find this evidence? What plan or strategy will allow our kids to receive a five-day curriculum in four days? Will we just block off one-fifth of their curriculum or do we have to purchase all new? If, if we have to purchase new, what will that cost? Um, if we're just adjusting, how will teachers handle that undertaking? Sounds like a lot. Um, will we adj, will we adjust sports practices to four-day as well? How will that impact athletic programs? I mean, are we going to be only four-day for education, but keep sports five-day? Um, kinda seems unthinkable. Um, are we approaching teacher retention problems with four-day school as the only fix and overlooking other possible issues? How is our leadership and accountability in the school workplace? Could this be contributing to lack of teacher retention? As much as I want our teachers to be recognized and valued if that's what four-day provides, I am concerned about academic performance and academic growth in our school with this change. The potential proposed schedule idea would add around one hour and ten minutes per school day. And I know it's just proposed, but I know my kids are tapped out by three P M as it is already. I'm not sure how they could receive an additional quality hour of schooling. Looking at IowaSchoolPerformance.gov already shows Waukano performing lower than surrounding schools and in particular, our elementary have the needs improvement rating. In short, I want to know that four-day school will lead to more instruction, not less, better academic performance and not a bare minimum. And I would like to see more evidence than a survey. One other secondary concern I have for our district is the possibility of more open enrollment, um, out of the school. I've been asking around most of them, um, to people in Waukano district who enroll out and why they've had a combination of reasons, like sports, academics, or some life schedules in Waukano district. But four-day school is not enticing to them. My concern here is that enrollment equals funding and if we drag out students who are concerned over academics or simply can't afford added daycare expenses, what loss to our budget will we see? I urge the board to take it slow, let Winfield and Highland run a four-day and gather evidence and show us how it will provide academic growth in our school so that we can be proud. Thank you.
Uh, by the way, Tim Coleman, thanks for having us here tonight. Let us voice our concerns. Um, so from the last meeting, uh, one of the main reasons was to go to this four-day was to keep up with the other different things that happened. Um, I guess my questions are, have you done any exit interviews with the staff? A larger amount of staff that we lost last year? And if you have, what were the results? Um, was the main reason to go to a four-day school day or week? Um, or was it something else that we can try to fix internally maybe? Um, and to kind of touch on some of the stuff Adam said, um, if you decide that we go with this four-day, I would assume and/or expect there not to be any extracurriculars on that extra day off. Um, and the old adage, uh, if practice makes perfect, um, then why are we taking practice out of academics? And, um, as far as the, the daycare, I know it's kind of touched a little bit on that the school may be possibly provide daycare during the school day, school week or day off, excuse me. Um, if we're offering that, then why not just have school? Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Jessica.
Um, hi, thank you for the opportunity again to speak to you guys. Um, I'm Jessica Buster, I have three children. Um, all three children are in three different school districts. I choose to open enrollment, two of the three, um, due to the quality of education that they can receive at the other districts. I have one in Minneapolis, one in Orange Sun, and one here. Um, the one that attends here is simply because of social issues she had in Minneapolis. Otherwise, she would be there. Um, my concern is the kids that, and Beth touched base on this from her own personal experience, but kids that do have mis, or misbehavior, right? What happens then on the Fridays or the Mondays, whatever the day, it's Monday, I guess. But what happens on those days when they do not have supervision from a parent? What does that do to the community as a whole? Are they going to be out running around and causing issues for the community? Um, I, I think is a valid concern. Uh, as an employer, um, for the workforce, what is this teaching them as they graduate by school? Because it's really difficult now to find people who want to work full-time. Um, so I cannot imagine taking a child who has worked four out of five days a week and saying, now you are gonna be put in a workforce where you are expected to work forty hours a week minimum. Um, you know, what, what is that, I guess, training them for, for their expectations in the future? Because I can promise, I really don't ever see a true work day or work week going to four days a week unless it's certain work in like four days, you know, like different industries do that. But, um, any type of, I would say questionable, um, is usually a liability. That is a concern. Um, if there's no cost savings, is it truly the benefit of teacher retention? Uh, others have also touched base on it. Is that really the issue? Uh, or is there further issues that really need to be investigated of why are these teachers? Um, and I think Tim had asked a question of, are exit interviews being done with any of these individuals? Um, you know, and obviously you're gonna answer any of these questions, but I, I'm curious to see what some of those facts are, um, that maybe you've, you've found, right? Because that, I think, would help, um, the whole community maybe supporting more on the decision if we know some of these things, um, instead of it just being like they said, the survey that sits out there and says a few positive and negatives. Um, well, the four-day school week earn our sports numbers more. I mean, my daughter's eighth grade and there's seven girls on the volleyball team, seven. So anybody, if there's more than one sick, I'll wrap up the clock, I'm sorry. If there's more than one sick, right, then they don't even have a team. But what happens to these kids that live outside of school? Like I tell you now, that if that's the case, then I can't drive her to school at three-thirty for a sport, uh, practice on a day where they don't have school or even earlier than that. Um, and I do question the increased family time as a positive. Because I do think it's putting back on parents that if they're working, it's not family time. It's these kids having no supervision, um, and that's the older kids, right? Obviously, I mean, my little kids, um, I'm at the point now where thankfully I don't have to worry about daycare. But for those that do, that's an added expense to them and a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Please, I'm coming your way.
I don't think we should do the four-day school week because, um, most people don't really like school that much and adding homework time to a day, most people are ready by like two o'clock. And sports practices would go later in the day when, when it's already almost dark outside. So if you wanna do something outside, you really can. And extending school hours would mean later practice. So then we can really do stuff after practice if you want to.
All right, you can just pass it to your mom.
I guess I'm most concerned that going to a four-day school week will affect the amount of content being covered in each subject or course. With approximately forty minutes added to each school day, that gives about five minutes added to each of the eight classes at the junior high and high school. Plus, many curriculums are divided into a certain number of lessons or into five days of content. How are kids gonna get through five lessons in four days to keep pace with the amount of content for each grade level so they thoroughly get through all the standards and benchmarks for each grade level and each course?
All right, thank you, Margaret. Adam. Next.
I'm skeptical at this point that four-day school is as best for my kids and kids in general. But the concern I wanna focus on is about this process. The first public meeting opened with Mr. Pearson saying this would not be going to be. And then nearly all of the comments from the committee were in favor of the decisions, and decisions had already been made, not the decision. I'm concerned about the secretive nature of the process. I was told meetings were not secret, but they would not be open to the public. Even just for observation without comment. That is the definition of secret. I am concerned the parents and community members have not been added to the committee and were not from the start. I am concerned that there are no community members on the committee that are not affiliated with the school district. Every member of the committee is employed by the school except one, and that school board member's spouse is employed by the school. I am concerned that there are two school board members on the committee, exactly two. But is the number, that is as many as you can have, the number is as many as you can have on the committee without requiring an open meeting? The rumors around town among parents are that every school board member favors this four-day plan at this point or some version of others. Whether that is true or not is beside the point. There is a perception among the public that this process is being robed. And this district has done very little in action to counter that perception. I have heard it said that no decisions have been made, but many decisions have obviously already been made. Such as to pursue four-day, to form a committee with no parents or community members not employed by the school. To discuss and investigate the issue before any of those members were added, resulting in minds being made up or changed on the part of the existing committee. To keep this process secret, even though some lines of this is infected and the purpose behind our committee law. To start a pilot program mid-year this year and then to decide not to do that pilot program and push four-day to next year. To have an extra day off for you Monday. To change school hourly employees to salary, so that they would be the same, pay the same for working fewer hours. Perhaps some of these decisions were not so explicitly made or not set in stone, but they were made nonetheless. I was most recently told that the work on the committee is now nearly complete, so no one else needing to be added. If that's true and the work is completed without any community or parent involvement, I think that's a shame. If it's not, these members should be added and meetings opened up. If we can't trust this process, how can we trust implementation? It's good that we trust our educators in this district so much that we want our kids to spend more time with them. That's a good fact. I have been in dialogue with Brandon, I really appreciate it. I'm hopeful that the board administration will support and plan for the meeting on October ninth. I think it's a good start. Parents also need to hear from their board members on where they stand.
If, if you need to finish, uh, Brad.
Uh, just so I don't have to talk anything later. The two main points that are concerns to me about the substantive issue of four-day are one, um, it's very difficult to come back from. Everything I've read on it, it's very difficult to muster the public will to come back from four-day if, um, if you go to it. And so it's not something you can tinker with or play with or experiment with or try, try a run. Once it's in, it's there, whether the schools, uh, whether children's academic, uh, progress is affected negatively or not. Um, and then the second issue, um, is I don't know how you get a full day into little pieces throughout the other four days. It's never been explained. I don't know how you make up that extra lesson. The only explanation was Kevin, was that you know, sign the hallmark at the, uh, at the end of those classes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. Uh, Danielle, your next panelist.
Some of mine will be piggybacked up of what others have said. I have, um, strong concern with what Adam was just talking about, but, uh, felt like they kicked in and said that we're going slow, but, um, just because we haven't been involved in six months doesn't make me feel like it's going slow. I actually felt very shocked when I heard that we were having a listening meeting and we hadn't had a follow-up from our Q and A this group. Because I felt like there was a lot of very educated, um, concerned, uh, you know, community members that asked questions and then we never really got any follow-up from it and were added to the committee or opened to those meetings. So I felt like there was, and I don't feel like all those answers are on the website. So I think that working together forward, um, hasn't probably happened in six months, I guess. I think I feel like we have separate groups all working for or against it, but we together are not working towards a, a decision or improvement. Um, I also agree W M U is trying it out for us. And I've heard a lot of negative things from, I mean, I'm from Windville. And so this past Monday, I think or the Monday before was the first one that they actually didn't have school. Because they went ahead and had school on some Mondays to make up for snow days potentially coming up. So they were going more days and longer days. And I spoke with, uh, a mother from there that is a teacher, a different sister, it's not in Waukano, but her kids go there and they have hated it so far. She said he has been up late every night reading on his homework because he and junior high lost his study hall because of going to four days. So he doesn't have a study hall, so then with sports and getting home later at night, he was really struggling thus far. So, so far, um, she was not in favor of it and would have no intentions of changing her work from a five-day school that she teaches at to go there because of them. Um, I think that with the rush, let's see how it goes for them. Like we have, right next door, we have a pilot. I think it would be good if I were gonna survey at Orange Sun to see if there are families that, you know, that would impact them. Like maybe there's some families that would choose us over there because we're five days and they don't have daycare. Or this makes more sense for them, so why not? We don't know what we don't know. I also think we need to survey our community or do an open vote like someone said. Because I didn't even answer the first survey because I didn't know what I thought about it. I didn't even know what it meant yet. So I have a different, uh, point of view now and would like to express that. Um, and I do feel like our board is voting for all of us. So it's important to know what your community feels. Um, and if that's yes, great, and if it's no, then I think our board needs to support that. Um, I don't feel like it provides for more family time and I'm one that didn't wanna send my kids back to school than a summer. I'd love to keep them home as long as I can. But my kids are involved in athletics and things and so they're gonna get up earlier, they're gonna stay later. And then like say wrestling season, for instance, we have lots of teams that, you know, share time and then they're gonna be home, like the first practice is gonna start later, so then the next practice is later and so on. And then, and that's a circle. Um, yeah, and then I'd like to know what the exit interview said for people that we offered jobs to that didn't take it. Um, if they decided we were four-day, would, would you have taken it? And I think we could compare maybe some things in five-day districts that they're doing better than us to grow as a five-day district. Because I just think we may have some other areas that we can improve.
All right. Thank you, Danielle. Jason.
Uh, thanks for giving us the opportunity to do this. Uh, I'm probably gonna be in the minority here tonight, so hopefully somebody gets their pitchforks out, find my way out. Uh, I do think a lot of the concerns that have been brought up tonight are very valid, I think they're addressable though. Um, I am speaking in for, in favor of the four-day school week. Uh, several reasons why. One, I think, uh, listening to parents and staff in Carbondale and Waco, they're finding some success with that. So I think that's worth exploring. Um, I may be in another minority, I've got a son with some health concerns that has to go to the North River basis Wednesday afternoon. Wednesday afternoon. It's a tough time to get into a doctor's appointment. Having one free day each week to be able to get him into a doctor's appointment would allow for him to miss less time in school. I think that would be a positive thing. At my workplace right now, we're currently contemplating going to a four-day work week. As we make and move towards making that decision, uh, some of the studies that we have read regarding four-day work weeks would indicate that, um, maybe your first two days off are used to de-stress and unwind from work. And then that third day off is what really allows an employee to enjoy, uh, their time off. Uh, I think, you know, if that affects adults that way, why would it not affect children that way? Again, I'm totally in favor of this and, uh, look forward to the future decisions.
All right, thank you, Jason. Melissa.
I'm not the only one.
Oh, thank goodness.
Okay, so good evening. I'm Melissa May and I currently teach during the month. Several years ago, I was asked to come back into education after having been at, um, another district for twenty-one years and the ADA. Um, I was asked to cover a three-month maternity leave in the elementary as they were having a hard time finding a setup. Um, later on, I was asked again to cover another, um, sub-three-month maternity at the beginning of twenty-twenty-one. So I did the whole mask thing in first grade. That was fun. I did join the staff the following year as a math interventionist because of COVID and no other funds. And I love that job and I wanted to return to it the next year. Um, but in late July, early August, I was approached, actually had been approached at the end of May, but I said, no, thank you. Um, but they returned at the end of July, first of August and said, will you please reconsider doing junior high math? We've had no math plans. Had I not taken that position, it would have forced an involuntary transfer of someone. So I'm here because we can't find teachers. I couldn't do that to the kids, so I returned the next year. The position remained open the entire year. They offered it to one person who chose to go somewhere else. So I'm not going to lie. I, a four-day week would definitely be an incentive for me to stay at the district. Because we do have family businesses and they have suffered with my time away and I have to balance. And I don't know how much longer I can balance, but I do what I do for the kids. So, um, the decline in mental health is very real for the staff and the students. I was in a meeting today where staff members said, I don't know if I'll make it to Thanksgiving and I'm Scott Weaver. I don't know where she go. So we need to look at all of the outside school activities that didn't even exist when I was in school. There are a whole lot more activities that our kids, especially elementary levels, are involved with that just adds to their day and they do need that decompressed time, I believe. Um, I was at both of the informational presentations and I did hear the concerns. Um, I did also hear a few positives as well. And one thing I know for sure is that our students deserve to have certified teachers in the classroom. The last two years, this has not been the case at the elementary or the high school. We have associates monitoring classrooms. We have online options and our teachers are trying to fill in. They're teaching music, they're teaching art, which means they're not getting their prep and this is going to need to be to teacher burnout even sooner. I encourage the board to look at the big picture and consider what will benefit them like George and our school population. And then if that does turn out to be a problem, then please also look at this to be better for the few that are struggling. You can never be everyone happy.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, that gets us to the end of the list of people who signed up to speak. Um, if there's anybody who spoke who would like to finish their thoughts, you'd be given the chance to, um, now is your opportunity.
I knew I had something else coming up. Uh, I just, one thing I wanted to say was, um, I would ask at the board, really consider taking questions like my current superintendent, they posed this at their school last year. He sent me all the documentation that they sent out, the letters, all the letters that were sent to the community members saying this is why we're looking at every parent in the district received a letter from the superintendent saying this is what we're looking at. This is why we're looking at it. We understand their concerns. You're invited to come to our these meetings, yar yar yar. Um, and then they also had taken questions that, similar questions that everybody here has asked. And they had asked those exact same questions to either principals or superintendents in districts that have already had the four-day school week in place for numerous years. So that way they could see and it was, it was really interesting reading that where it was color-coded, each school had it color-coded and every school was asked the exact same question. And I just think if we're going to, as we continue to do research, that would be really nice to know that our research, we're looking into every district and we're asking every single district the exact same questions. And so we, because data would tell you, we're not, if we test students and we test them each differently, that's not giving us any, our data is skewed. So if we want to look at other districts, we have to look at all the same we need to know, ask all the same questions at every single district. And also theirs was also brought to community vote and I think that's really important too, because I felt like, like, um, Adam brought up a good point, you know? That then the talk around town isn't so much like this is all, this has already been decided and where the community was given a chance to vote on it was huge for that district. And that's just going off what conversations with my superintendent.
All right, thank you, Kristy.
Okay, Kristy.
Okay. I'm on that.
Um, so the, the focus on teacher recruitment and retention, I totally understand the meaningful of good teachers and the meaningful teachers. But my question is, um, the staff that's leaving are, as far as I know, very few of our staffing members, maybe one or two who has left to go to a four-day district in the last several years. Is it, is it really a, a true statement that we would hold any more people being afforded districts? Um, I know that Waco had lost several teachers this year, several associates, a principal, a counselor. Um, and had other teachers that, that attempted to leave and were not allowed out of the contract. So, I mean, four-day districts are also losing teachers. So if, if, I find it hard to, you know, believe that this would be a fix-all. Um, and so I guess that's, that's something that I would like to have looked at in those four-day districts. You know, what, are they truly retaining teachers? Are they truly recruiting teachers? And are they recruiting teachers that want to be there for the right reasons? Or are they recruiting teachers that just want to live a four-day week? Um, and then along with that, you know, the, the concern of retaining and gaining students. Um, you know, I know that there's families that are, that are concerned that are looking at what's the best for their family and how many students are going forward to lose. Um, I guess just looking at what, what is our true why to move forward with this.
Number one, I hope that we're calling in resources for the teacher who needs support. There's A, E, A, there's resources that can come alongside them. They get stuff out there, folks, really is. However, I do love my job. Um, so my one question is we, we had some, the committee I mentioned that a lot of businesses are going four-day. Um, my question is how many of them have Mondays off? That's kind of a unique day. Um, and Waco did lose eight staff members. I don't think four days is a fix-all is, is what I'm saying. Um, I, I do think that we need to think about people who we go to five-day. I mean, I'm not gonna put my child in childcare somewhere when I'm working a five-day district. I would day with me before I, you know, keep them in a four-day, put them in daycare for a week without me. That'd be not the right move for my family.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there anybody else who spoke before? Okay, and down to your number, pass it to Danielle.
Um, to address the four-day work week, um, in the business finance sector. I guess I was underneath impression everything I read on recently, you know, two four-days about a year ago. Um, my father-in-law used to work there and it was, my understanding it was a profitability issue. Um, I know we're referencing the work world's going four days, um, but these people are working four, ten-hour days plus. But it's hard to compare with that because on the day off that Han's not there, it's my understanding that the warehouses are black. Nobody's in there, nothing's on. It was a profitability issue. So something to consider, let's not try to shorten our kids' education comparing it to the manufacturer.
My husband works at Han and I would, um, say this lady was completely correct.
Uh, I was curious, like, and I get why Monday makes sense because there's so many Monday holidays. And so, um, I, I think that's probably why we chose them because then otherwise we're gonna run into problems with there's, you know, holidays we can't get around having off and then we're gonna have another day off in the week if, if it was a four-day calendar. So I get that. But also, uh, business owner, Monday's one of my busiest days. So I'm not gonna be able to take Monday off always so that I can spend that extra time with my kids. It's just not feasible. I mean, I'd love to do that maybe once a while I could, but not, not as a regular basis. So I would actually lose time with my children because of the longer day. Um, and then, you know, practices starting later, et cetera. My other thought was that I hadn't said before was, uh, is there other ways that we could tweak our calendar to improve the mental health? Or, you know, the breaks for teachers or things like that. I mean, I don't know, even if it was like a full day once a month and some weather early out sometimes. Or if our Christmas break was two full weeks or we actually had a spring break like some other schools do. Um, or are things that would be enticing for someone to come work here like air conditioning? I know that's something that has not been a secret. We all want the neighbor's school smell better all the time and things like that. But it just is, you know, I just feel like it's awesome that we have so many community members and all the ones that I've attended that care. And so that's comforting to me that we have so many parents, um, and business owners and grandparents and whoever that care about our district. And I think that it isn't a secret that we've been lowering the floors and things like that and maybe had some turnover and missing teachers for the last few years. But I just really empower us to hopefully find other ways to address those issues than just support it. And like I said, if this ends up being the best option or not, I believe the only option. I think we have some other things we need to, to work on.
I truly believe that you've all thought of all these questions. I mean, a, a majority of them, right? Uh, were you done with research or the committee has? And I guess that's where, um, I think it was mentioned communication back. If, if you've done that and you have those answers and something that you can provide all of us that are sitting here asking those questions, um, that would be fantastic. Because again, if this is truly the best option and the best way forward, I think that's how you're gonna get buy-in from the community as well, is the clear communication and what you've actually found. Because, and maybe it's me lack of research, uh, maybe it's out there. I truly don't know. So if that's the case, please somebody correct me. Um, but I think that would go a long ways. Uh, if we could just have those answers or those, the, the, who you've talked to, maybe you've just listed those, right? Or something to that effect of what information you have received. And why, again, just build your case in a way to us of why this makes sense more.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to finish some thoughts that were cut off? Have you taken your wife's second half?
Well, you know, who I, who I am, and I've run a business successfully. I've run a business for several years in this town, had employees, paid taxes. As a school board, you were elected and have done an excellent job of trying to provide the best education possible for our kids in this district and this town. And what I'm concerned about if we go to a four-day is how it'll affect the most effectable kids, which is our elementary kids. You're setting standards for those kids in the educational system that will establish their standards for their entire life and their entire working career. And if you cut back on that and lower their school standards and let them lower their standards, that's not gonna be in their best interest. The board is entrusted to provide the best education possible. Now, there were some statements about our school numbers that are not good. I'm not sure the four-day is a solution. There is a solution somewhere and I'm not, I don't have an answer for that. But I don't believe the four-day is a solution. My question is if our standard, if our numbers are down and I know our elementary students are the most vulnerable for not getting adequate education and getting enough standards established, how is less education time gonna help this at all? That's the question I pose. And as far as the four days for businesses, it don't work at the professional level. You don't see Han closing their offices where the management is on those, that fifth day. It works for a production facility, which we need good production facilities. Even sending production out of the country isn't working that well because the products aren't being made as well. Most of these companies that have gone to four days, they don't stay there. They find out it's not efficient. They don't end up getting three and a half days worth of work out of their employees because it's a half a day back just to get up to speed. So using them as an example for education, that education is not at the level of, and no offense to anybody here, but it's not at the production level of, of making desks or chairs or anything like that at all. We're developing the minds of our youngest people and that's what education is. I think it's a very professional profession.
Thank you, Ed. Also, on this Diane.
Um, I have a short one. So, um, are you, work at County? We have an eighteen people at our office. Um, about fifteen or sixteen of them take, uh, day from May until September. Um, we do it, uh, it, it doesn't really help the county at all. It's just more of a, like, for our employees, a lot of them work extra job and make extra good money then. Um, it, it doesn't really help our mission to do those days. Um, I find that, uh, Monday mornings can be a little slow or can be a work extra, um, if a kid has a long day or something like that. It just, it just, you, you, you can't get more done in longer days, but everything has to be perfect. The weather has to be perfect. Everybody has to be there, yar 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 yar. So if, if you guys have, you know, days that you guys know or homecoming or whatever, you're, you're gonna lose days. Probably, I, I think.
So I think the most compelling thing to me that I heard in favor of four-day that I haven't heard at all is Melissa May saying she might leave the math position. Melissa May is a rock star teacher. And I think, um, while I don't think four-day is a solution to that, I would encourage the board to explore every legal option you have to keep and retain, uh, and attract rock star teachers like that and teachers in these hard-to-fill positions. Whether that's through, you know, merit pay, I know unions don't like that, but I don't care. Um, so if you can keep them through merit pay, if you can keep them through, you know, increased pay for hard-to-find positions, which we have some right now, I would fully support that on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Can we ask Melissa questions? Because you say that, um, a major thing for you is your family business, right? But that's why a four-day work week is Could that's why a four day work week, or four day would be beneficial to you? So I think other teachers experience it, so I'm not trying to discount you, but since you spoke. Like, I am curious to hear of, um, what it would mean different for you? Because I know like Mondays, there's two Mondays and Monday, it says it's planning period. And I know from my best friend who teaches, her planning period now is for mostly nine. And it, I mean, it, it does harm for her feeling that too, right? Because, so I guess from, I wouldn't mind personally hearing from a teacher's point of view of if, other than just the family business, of what the other benefits or what attracts you. Okay, so I did jot some notes. I know there were, um, is it okay that I answered? Let's say, otherwise if it did not, I can talk to outside.
Well, yeah, you know, of course you would.
Um, I guess I would say to the, to the people who question the curriculum. As a teacher, you should be teaching the standards. And that's what you are responsible for and how you get there could be through the curriculum. And should be through the curriculum, but you need to do what's best for your kids. I will say coming into the position, there were things that I had to backfill. And I'll be honest, my first year, I did not get through the whole curriculum because I had to take my kids where they were and get them the foundation they needed to be successful. So I didn't get through the curriculum, my test scores didn't go up though. So I did what they needed to do and I believe that's what your good teachers will do. Um, we have things we call nice to know and needs to know. Some of those nice to knows might fall off, but those needs to know to be successful will be what the four is. Um, our in-services are on Wednesdays. Wednesdays are longer this year, um, so we don't start, high school gets out at one thirty, so we save one forty. But, you know, by the time you use the restroom, grab a drink and make your way to the library, it's one forty-five. It's hard to get into a subject or a process really deep in that amount of time. The possibility of having a whole morning to really dive in and do some of those things and network would be awesome. I was just over at the elementary trying to help out, having been a math interventionist. That would be something I could do. And I wouldn't have had to take time out of honestly my classroom today in order to help out with that. So it would allow for a more professional growth, I believe, than currently possibly is allowed with our one thirty hours. And I can't remember if there was another question.
No, it was just more of.
Right. And a lot of times, honestly, my Wednesdays are my shorter days. So that, those are some of the days where I try to fill in the, the backfill. And I can't go as deep on those days because they are already short classes. But that's the day that technically I'm losing. I'm not losing a full day, I'm losing my Wednesday, which was already a short day anyway.
All right. I think everybody has had a chance to share their thoughts. Um, on behalf of the board, thank you for coming out, thank you for your contributions, your honesty. Um, I know I filled up many pages, I'm assuming board members did here as well. Thank you. Our next board meeting is October ninth and I can tell you that this, moving forward on how do we continue this exploration process is something that the board will be talking about at their October ninth meeting. So, um, are there any closing thoughts from the board?
If, if you wanna open up questions, or if anybody wants to talk, they can write their name down, go ahead.
Anybody else have questions? Yes?
Uh, I'm Liz Freitag. Uh, I'm not a Wapalo student parent yet. Um, we have twin, two-year-olds. So this is our future. Uh, so I have some, I am unopinionated at this time. I have some concerns on both sides. Uh, the first one, uh, it's childcare, I also brought up, I just wanted to bring up my personal experience. Uh, two spots, twins. It took me ten months to find part-time childcare for twins. So ten months and the influx that this is going to bring is concerning. So, uh, we talked about equity tonight. Uh, we live in Oakville, out of town. Uh, I know that a big, uh, thing that you guys have said is that people are already need to find childcare on Wednesday afternoons. Um, what's the difference between Wednesday and Monday? Uh, so in Oakville, we have Kids Club, that is a huge resource that we have, uh, for childcare on Wednesday afternoons. I spoke to both leaders today, um, in preparation for this. Uh, if they would be willing to do Mondays for four day, and they both said no. So in Oakville, that would, that resource would be gone. Uh, my personal experience with leaving school and mental health. Uh, my dad passed away when I was twelve. Uh, my mom picked up a terrible, uh, coping mechanism. Twelve years old, I should be okay, right? But I have a lot of emotional damage from the age of twelve to seventeen. Uh, because all I had was school. Uh, and so there's gonna be kids like that that only have school and it's not just elementary kids. It's, you're still a kid at seventeen. Uh, I will note that I was a little frustrated that, uh, hearing about that there had been a survey out, um, and how it was conducted. Uh, because I am a future parent, but I did not attend parent-teacher conferences. And so this decision will affect me and my children and my family for the next twenty years. However, I was not surveyed, other tax, um, payers that this will affect was not surveyed. Uh, I am a Minneapolis alumnae and a big reason that I moved to the Wapalo Community School District, I did not want my kids to go to Minneapolis. Um, and a big part of that was the camaraderie and the environment that Wapalo has versus Minneapolis. I will say educationally, I felt very fulfilled at Minneapolis. But when it came to socially, I was not fulfilled. And I wonder if we take the day away from our kids making those friendships, making those comrades, getting to play sports with them, see them at recess, what we're taking away from them with that. Um, we talked about this a little bit, um, people put in corners, make questionable decisions. They talk about, you know, would a first grader be home alone because their parent was put in a corner of, what do I do with my kid? Uh, if we do future surveys, I think it would be beneficial to, uh, have a question that asks, how many people would use the optional day in order to see if it's worthy of getting rid of the day? Cause if you're gonna have seventy-five percent population going to use that optional day, it might as well be a school day. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, money may not make the world go round, but it sure frees up the wheels. Uh, why do most people leave their jobs? It's to get more money. I don't think that the four day week is, money is always the answer, unfortunately. Uh, I would rather cut extracurriculars because as a school, education should come first. So I would rather pay a good teacher and get rid of sports or whatever the extracurricular may be. Because if I'm sending my kid to school, their education is more important than the extracurriculars that they could participate in. Um, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, how are you? Um, I'm sitting here just taking the information. One thing that I hear a lot apparently is the need for daycares. As a current West County supervisor, I'm here to tell you that there are mechanisms in place in Southeast Iowa that provide funding to start a licensed daycare center. So if anybody's interested in starting their own business as a daycare, ask me, I can get you information and help you get funding to get started.
I feel like it's like lots of heavy things tonight and I just wanted to add, um, a positive thing. After listening to Liz, I also graduated from Minneapolis. And, um, I just wanted to say that Wapalo, I think one of the biggest strengths here is it's very welcoming and, um, and I think very inclusive. I think that is one of our greatest strengths.
Only thing to think about is how this affects the APs. Cause it does affect the minutes and it will be affecting those students as special.
Um, this isn't necessarily not to do with the five-day school day, but talking, hearing a lot about teacher retention and equating that to job retention. And I've only come up with three of the four right now. But I heard this a few years back and shared it a lot, I'll share it through tonight. But basically, um, when you're doing like a career evaluation, one is are you well compensated? Do you feel like you're well compensated for that? Do you see a path forward and do you have an identity in the job that you have? And a missing one, can recall it right now. But if, if retention is a big thing, how can we fill some of those gaps for the teachers that we'd like to retain?
I just wanna know one thing that, even though I spoke twice tonight, I just wanna say, I do appreciate all the teachers and Melissa, you do amazing with my hands. And I just wanna thank all the teachers that we do have because they are busting their tail every day. And I get it, I do it every day, I get it. Um, there's several of us in here that do and we understand, so we can kinda see it through both lens. But, and I see the other side of it totally. Um, but I just wanted to say, what you do does not go unappreciated, unappreciated ever, so.
Every Wednesday, do the teachers get together for meetings? Is it every Wednesday they get together or is there just some where they have like people in? Or is it like prep time sometimes? Sometimes it's in service or sometimes there's an A A, you know, like I see sometimes on them.
Right, right.
Is it different each time?
It varies throughout the, it's not every Wednesday because, you know, if, like on Monday, if there's a holiday, we definitely won't take that Wednesday off.
Gotcha, yeah.
But other than that, yeah, it happens on Wednesdays. Um, it's not considered prep time, now there's collaboration time that happens. But it's also when A A staff can come in and work with people. Or teachers can get together either within grade levels or even cross-curricular. It just can provide those time.
I just was curious what the option, just the idea, uh, brainstorm. If like one Wednesday on was opted, they did their teaching or A A came in in the morning. And rather than us having like early hours every Wednesday, like just other ideas to explore. If, if that helps other teachers go over to buildings and collaborate with other, you know, they have more of a full day versus being, you know, tired as they say, you know, at the end of the day to learn something or attain something. If there's other options that we could do for that teacher development and for their mental health and engagement. Um, just playing with that time a little bit, if that would be an idea that we could explore.
Yep.
Um, so on the, uh, the post calendar, every other Wednesday, I believe, from eight thirty to eleven thirty was, um, what were they, Tuesday?
Right.
Oh, no, no, sorry, yes. So would, would teachers be expected to be onsite on Thursday night?
Yes.
So I guess my question is, what are, what have teacher thoughts been? I know some of the teachers don't live in town, so for a teacher, you know, Wednesdays now, they're already at, so they're already in town. So is that something teachers are looking, is that something teachers are okay with, that they would drive to Wapalo for three hours a day? Has that been discussed with them? Or was it like Dana's proposing where they have an entire day versus three hours a day in the morning?
Well, another thing a question is, is Waco, is why are? Another question is, my understanding, we, we look at Waco because they've been doing this so many years, but they're available on day five for help. I've talked to some Waco parents and the teachers are there and are available, um, for students coming in to help. They are also available, the students come in and work on their college classes during that time. So that would be something to be, if they're not.
No, it is.
Okay, okay. So I was thinking.
Your seat works there.
Oh, okay, so, so they are there.
So they're there every other Friday for the morning.
Every Friday, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Just the morning or the evening?
For the morning.
Okay.
That's at the elementary, I can't speak to high school, but I know the elementary for sure.
Okay. Do you know that they run Austin, where the kids need transportation?
On Friday.
The Fridays that they're there, coming in to get them?
No.
Okay.
But again, I can't speak to high school.
Okay.
This is a listening session.
Okay. Any other questions? So I didn't know, I was just wondering.
I think Brandon said for you guys to ask, ask questions, people that have time.
So the next step then is the next floor? I was just wondering, like, we're having a speaking session or is this?
Yeah, there'll be further and then there'll be an open discussion for us to try to answer questions. Some of the questions are put on the website, there's a lot of data out there, if you just keep clicking, there's an enormous amount. Um, we can get more information out there. If you, if you didn't have one of your questions answered from the previous forum, just get with Mike. Cause we did, we did have answers to all of those, maybe, just maybe they didn't get posted, all of them, there was thirty-two, thirty-four questions, I think. So some of them may not got answered, but there'll be information on there. Um, and then we'll have kind of an open discussion, board meeting as well, which may take a while. Uh, but we'll try to answer some of the questions on things that we've found so far. And we still may not have an answer and have to get back to you on that. But, um, that's our plan. And we plan to set those dates and those schedules and those times in the next plan moving forward on the ninth is what we're planning on doing. So it won't be a more discussion on the ninth, it's kind of a day where we're gonna plan everything out for the next few months. If that makes sense.
So on the four day tab, you said third floor, just keep.
Yeah, it's quite a bit, it's better, it's better if you are on the actual laptop or computer, where you can see all of it, not, not on your phone.
Okay.
Yeah, just keeps scrolling down.
All right, well, thank you everybody. Appreciate you taking some time out of your life on a Tuesday evening. Okay, on behalf of the board, thank you for coming out. I just appreciate it.
Appreciate it.